Seven thirty, the regular session begins. Rob, you want to give us sort of an update on where things stand? Maybe has anything changed in terms of the revenues we're anticipating? Or tell us about big projects, stuff like that.
So, great. I wanted to make sure that we had this opportunity before the regular session since we have a number of outstanding issues that we've not yet brought to completion. The first, and it's an unusual procedure, it's one that doesn't get used very often, but has been used here in South Kingstown before. The petitions we have tonight are, have been the subject of some discussion in town. And I want to make sure folks understand what the petitions are and we have an opportunity to explain the difference between the petitions the council will consider tonight and budget referendum petitions. Those are very different than what is on the agenda for tonight. Tonight, you've got two petitions that have been filed by citizens for the council's consideration. And the way I think about these petitions are, is that they're like motions that have been made by a member of council. You have a sixth member, the citizens who filed these petitions tonight have filed a motion for the council's consideration. In talking to town, the town solicitor's office, the best advice we've got is that analogy is good insofar as it goes, but you have to actually vote these petitions up and down. You can't sort of amend them or table them forever. One could argue that that would be a vote on the petitions, but the better view is that these petitions need to be voted up or down. So the two petitions you've got are, one that would take $165,000 from the school fund and make those monies available for the future debt service associated with the school construction project that we're anticipating, having a budget referendum on, or I'm sorry, a budget vote on, referendum, sorry, sometime in the spring of next year. So it's got two parts. The money comes from the school fund and it goes into debt service so that we've got the money available for the future debt service need that we're anticipating. The second petition for your consideration tonight is a petition that would make $200,000 available for emergency medical services. And that money too would come from the school fund. The way the petition is designed is the money, $200,000, is reduced from the school fund and made available to the account for emergency medical services. Now, we've talked about both of these issues over the course of the last few weeks. And the EMS one is a complicated problem on some level. It's both a staffing problem and a service, I'm sorry, a facilities challenge for us. As the council knows, we have been struggling to try to make sure that we're modernizing our staffing program in the EMS area. And for the last couple of years, we've struggled. This past year, we've had a reform in the contract that really has brought us a lot more power, a lot more ability to recruit and we would argue retain EMS personnel. But prior to this budget change, which the council approved last summer, we were having some real challenges with retention and recruitment. Having addressed those issues, we're at the point where we can really begin to think about this second 24-hour shift. We've got one that operates out of the police station now. What EMS is contemplating is a second 24-hour shift that would operate out of the public services building. We're not staffed to do this yet. And we've just gotten our staffing program to the point where it's stable enough, we're comfortable enough, that we're going to be able to attract and retain the personnel that we need. And really, this had been conceived of by the EMS director and by folks here in Town Hall as a sort of multi-year thing. Get the staffing right, get the recruitment right, get the retention program right, then move on, get the facilities built out the way they need to be built out, and then bring on the staff that you need to run the 24-hour service. So that program has us bringing a EMS paramedic onto the staff in January of 2020, two more in July of 2020, and the fourth to get us to a complete team that can operate out of the Southern Station, the public building, public services building in January of 2021. That gives us the time we need to sort of integrate folks, get them on the team, get everybody, you know, sort of on the EMS South Kingstown program and build out the facility. The EMS director and Trish have been putting aside the money necessary for the facilities. In a memo I sent to the council over the weekend, I described that as a $60,000 project that involves the build out of a bunk area and a sprinkler system yet to be defined. It's really a question about whether the sprinkler system can be isolated to the bunk area or whether the code requires us to sprinkle the entire building. That's sort of the long pole in the tent at this point is figuring out what we have to do to sprinkle the building. The optimistic view is that we could, in theory, get through construction by fall. And if we had the staff and the money, we could have a four-person crew operating out of that Southern Station late fall, early winter. It's a full year and a bit ahead of where we would be. It's not, I would suggest, completely without challenges. Whenever you're starting up something this big, there's going to be bumps in the road. We would not have the sort of easing into the full service program that we have sort of been anticipating. There's been a lot said about the response times not being adequate and a lot said about the fact that we're relying on mutual aid from surrounding towns, Narragansett, North Kingstown, and Charlestown. It's important to know that even if we were to bring on a second 24-hour vehicle, we're not going to have guaranteed fast response times in all circumstances. And we may reduce our reliance on mutual aid, but we will still rely on mutual aid from the surrounding communities. And we will continue to provide mutual aid to the surrounding communities when we can. It's the nature of the business that you just don't know how many calls you're going to get simultaneously, and you just don't know where those calls are going to be. So while we think that it will definitely improve response times and will definitely reduce the number of instances where we have to rely on a vehicle coming in from Narragansett or Charlestown, it's important to know that this isn't, you know, a solves-all-problem kind of solution. It's not going to be a situation where if we put a second vehicle on the road, no one will ever have to wait for the same period of time that we've heard folks say they've waited for. And it's certainly not the case that we're going to eliminate all of the requirements for mutual assistance. That is the EMS, and I'd be happy to answer questions on that. I know Trish has been working on this project for, boy, probably a couple of years now.
Yeah, but just as a bit of clarification, there is no money?
Just as a clarification, there's no money currently in the budget for this. This was just a plan that we had spoke about, about three weeks ago, with EMS director on how we can phase in the personnel. But there isn't any funds set aside for these personnel at this point.
So you said it was a $60,000 capital expense that you were looking at for the...
Okay, so as far as capital goes, that's a different component. I was just speaking about personnel directly. But as far as capital goes, as far as outfitting South Station with new crew quarters so that they can stay there with sprinkler systems, we have currently $80,000 set aside for that. I have another $20,000 that's earmarked, that will come to you in June for a transfer. So I'm estimating about $100,000 in reserves for the capital project to outfit the South Station for sleeping quarters and the sprinkler system. But there is no money yet for personnel.
Craig Stanley's current estimate, his most up-to-date number is, and this is his estimate, $60,000. That's with the sprinkler system being assumed to be the small, not the large, system. So Trish's point is exactly right. The plan to get to a January still requires us to have about 32, 30...
So what we spoke about a month ago was to hire two in January. So right now, the estimated cost for one EMS person, employee, a paramedic, is about $74,000 one. So that's what we would need in January to fund two FTEs at that time for half the year. With that, Craig seems to think he can, he can take $50,000, reduce his overtime budget by $50,000. So we have a gap of about $25,000 in order to bring those two in, in January. And then come July of next year, we would fund them full-time, and then your two additional. So that would bring his complement to the four that he needs for that, that rescue, 24-hour.
What do you do with just having two EMS, though?
They would backfill it with per diem, from my understanding and talking with Craig, Chief Stanley.
Basically, cover shifts that are currently overtime or per diem.
And then it's probably an unknown, but the revenue for reimbursement?
Yeah, so Craig has been talking about, that's another piece of it. So Craig has been talking about $160,000, but that's not taken into consideration any uncollectibles, write-offs, or anything that we have. So for me, being conservative, I'd recommend increasing our EMS billing revenues by $100,000.
And we only bill people that are from out of town, correct?
Correct.
So the $72,000 estimate, though, takes into account third-party payments. That's the cost after we, we consider what we're bringing in.
So in order for us to hire the four EMS, 74, $75,000 times four, so that's $300,000 we would need to increase the EMS budget by. And then we would bring the revenue in, about $100,000, we would increase the revenue. So the amount of money going towards the tax dollar appropriation would only go up $200,000, the net.
Right. And the $200,000 net begins in total July 1 of 2020?
Yes.
Rob, didn't you say you were looking to bring one on in January of 2020, two in July, and one the following, 2021, to get us to that? Is that what I heard you say during...
That's what I spoke to Craig about this past week. Trish is outlining a different strategy that works faster...
Right.
...and requires more money upfront right now. $25,000.
Any other questions on the petitions or...
So just on the EMS, the question then becomes where might $25,000 be available from? Really, there aren't too many places in the budget. One of them is the council's revenues, the council's account.
Do we still have $60,000 in there? Sixty-five? Yeah.
And then tonight, we're also considering the tri-county...
So tri-county, tri-county community action, as you know, is a nonprofit organization that operates here in South Kingstown and has operated out of a location here in South Kingstown for many years. Historically, they've come in and made a request for $24,000 each year for at least the last decade. That request this year did not come in in a timely fashion. They missed the deadline. Came in quite a while after the budget process had been underway and said, well, we mailed, we emailed it, what happened? And, you know, we investigated, looked at our servers, found that, in fact, no application had been mailed to us. We didn't lose it, we didn't get it. They had then sent us a hard copy of an application, which was properly addressed to an email account here in Town Hall. Again, though, we checked our servers, it had never been emailed to us, it had never hit our server. Subsequent to that, they said, well, forget about the, the hard copy, we emailed it to the wrong domain. We emailed it to southkingstownri.org. And that domain is owned by the town. That domain is, in fact, a vacuum. If you email to that domain, you don't even get a bounce-back notice. So I can't tell you what happened to their application. I can tell you that it was not timely submitted and that it was not the town's fault that the application wasn't here on time. Their request is for $24,000, and they're also looking eventually to move away from an application for grant assistance toward assistance in the form of a property tax, property tax relief. They're looking for an exemption from property taxes for the building they own up on Kingston Road. The value of that tax exemption, if it were full, would be about $34,000, $35,000, about $10,000, $11,000 more than the grant has been historically. They've missed the deadline for processing that as well. That deadline also is aimed toward making sure that we know about exemptions during the budget cycle so that we can, you know, predict revenue. In fact, the ordinance doesn't allow for a waiver of the deadline, and they're just not eligible. There's nothing that can be done about that property tax abatement issue this year. That will have to wait until next year. They've stated an intention to make an application in December of next year for this coming, the next budget year. And my recommendation is that they should qualify. They're a nonprofit organization that's done a great deal of good here in, in South Kingstown. In fact, they generate a federal grant that yields $18,000 of benefit to the senior center each year. There is no doubt it's a meritorious organization. The question simply becomes, how do we fund $24,000 in the outside agencies, social service agencies category at this point? The options would be find other revenue, again, the council account, and reallocation among the agencies in the other agency and outside social service agency account would also be the way to do that.
So the town council's $60,000 budget, or if it's, what is it typically used for?
It's just, historically, it's just been one-time requests that come to the council from outside organizations, donations that aren't through our operating budget. So there's, we haven't spent anything for 2019 yet.
Trying to think what we've done in the past.
I think the Welcome House had come one year.
They came for an adjustment on their taxes, I believe.
Yep, and we took it from your line item. Mm-hmm.
So I'd like to just comment briefly, if I may, on the difference between the petitions you're hearing tonight and a budget referendum. I've heard folks suggest that tonight's petitions are the first step toward a budget referendum. And that's really not the case. They're very separate procedures, they're not tied to each other. One can go out and get a referendum petition without having done a petition for consideration by the council first. They're, they're just not connected one to the other. Budget referendum under the charter requires that the citizen seeking to have a question resolved by the voters collect 200 signatures on a petition on a form that's been certified by the town clerk. Those questions, if the 200 signatures are, are correct and accurate, generate a question that goes on a ballot for a special election on June 4th, would be the date this year, and is not in any way related to this set of questions the council will consider tonight. One thing that I think is important for folks to recognize is that the charter also has an override provision. The override provision in the charter says that if a budget referendum is properly filed, the referendum is held, the question is answered in the affirmative, and the budget is to be modified according to the referendum. The council still has the authority to override that budget referendum if the council deems that the expenditure would be fiscally irresponsible or not fiscally responsible. That's an important provision, and the idea is, you know, even if you get folks saying, we'd like to spend more money on, on something, if it's going to do harm to the fiscal well-being of the community, the council, and in fact, when it comes to the school fund, the council and the, the school committee have the authority to say, we appreciate the interest in doing this, but because it would cause harm, we're not going to do it. At that point, the monies that have been identified as being desired don't get expended on the item that they've been identified for, and the money is held for no purpose. It's held in reserve. The problem I see with us this year, if we were to have a budget referendum, is we've already bumped up against the 4% cap. So anything that would push us over that would be very difficult to, to sustain. It would be very hard to know, it would, it's very hard to know how you could have an expenditure above the level that the state says is the legal limit that doesn't open that question, raise the question, is this fiscally responsible?
Rob, how much would it cost for a referendum approximately?
About $10,000, Dale?
Between $10,000 and $12,000.
And Rob, is there a, there's a minimum amount that a referendum can be for? Is that correct?
Two hundred and fifty thousand, upward and...
Right. Right, so a referendum up would push us over the 4%?
It would at this point.
Any other questions?
Rob, you talked a little bit about one of the petitions. Can you talk further as to the impact of the other petition?
Sure. The second petition is a petition that would, and I want to come back and make one more note about EMS before I forget it, but the second petition would take $165,000 from the school fund and allocate those, those same $165,000 for future debt service in accord with the plan that was laid out in the preliminary budget, the, or proposed budget. The idea simply being those funds were identified by staff as being necessary for a future debt need that we anticipate we're going to have. It's not a good idea to shift them from future need to manage debt to current operations. That's the proposal. It really is one of those situations where we're going to have to cover a hole in the debt service account. And 2024, Trish has got us with a schedule that we hit a sort of low point in that fund in 2024 of about $900,000. And taking $165,000 away from the reserves that would be aimed toward reducing that increases our exposure in the future. And in 2024, we'd be $900,000 plus 165, a million, $65,000 in the hole. It's, it's a bit dicey, and there's really only two ways to handle that. We either do something about adding that 165 back in now, or we're going to have to make up that 165 between now and 2024. So it is, it is a real challenge, but it's also a challenge we think we can manage under either scenario.
Rob, I have one, a quick question. Our preliminary budget, we were looking at numbers that were incorrect. And initially, we had decided to put aside $500,000 for debt service. So who made the actual decision to move the 165 from debt service?
So the way the, and Trish, by all means, if you'd like to jump in, you're welcome to, but the way that the decision to, was made is that during the preliminary budget adoption discussion, the council had committed to a property tax transfer of 1.75%. When the Director of Finance sat down the next morning to fill out the forms necessary to certify that we were in compliance with the 4% property tax cap, she realized that the, the calculation of the 1.75 was based on property tax and motor vehicle tax collection levy. We can't use the motor vehicle tax levy as part of our certification that we're in compliance with the 4% cap. The 4% cap is only on real property. In order to get the forms and, and certification done in a timely manner, she consulted with the town solicitor, and the adjustment came from really one of the only places it could come from, which was that, that account. There's just not a lot of movement in anything else that you can, you can take from without impacting...
So just a follow-up question, we couldn't have corrected it the other way at that point, or it would have been too late?
I don't understand the question.
Meaning if we had made a mistake and we had gone over the threshold, why did we have to go to the debt service for the funds? Why couldn't we have just corrected the error?
Reduce the amount by 160, because that would not have met the council's objective of a 1.75% property tax transfer. It had to come from one place or the other. One was a policy decision that the council clearly had, had debated and discussed. The other was a more fungible, more movable number. And again, while we're going to have to make up that $165,000, we have time to do it. You can never make up a reduction in property tax transfer. It's, once you've changed it downward, you're kind of there.
So, so basically, Brian, I actually spoke with Rob and the solicitor and Dale at that point. And because you had already voted on the school 1.75, it just made sense to take it from the debt service because what you can do, and I'm looking at my spreadsheet when I developed the capital budget, so for, for the 2020 budget, I had added an additional $500,000 to pay for future debt. And then in 2021, because I budget this for six years, what's going to happen to us for six years? So in 2021, I budgeted an additional $300,000. And then in 2022, another $450,000. So you can definitely, in the future years, increase the appropriation to close the actual gap in 2024. So that was really the only, you had already voted on the municipal budget, we had already voted on the school budget. This is the only one that made sense with flexibility in future years that you have.
It also represents the place that was, had the most uncertainty about where you're going to see things shifting. The bond has already been pushed off from fall of this year to sometime in the spring at the earliest of next year. There's more uncertainty with regard to that program than there is with regard to the school program. We have a pretty good sense of what the impact of a reduction of $165,000 would be on the school program. We have less clarity around the impact. We have clarity. I mean, I don't want to give the impression that we don't know that we've got a hole in that service count. in that service count. We do. We just have more moving parts on that program than we do in, in the education account. With regard to the impact.
We've gotten past 7:30 at this point, so I'm gonna move us to the regular session at this. We can talk about it during the regular session as well. All right. So, welcome everyone to this meeting of the South Kings Town Council. This is our final budget meeting tonight. It is 7:30. Our first order of business is the pledge to the flag, so please rise and join us.
I pledge the presidency to the flag. United States of America, and to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit, and to the God of the nation, and to the people of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Will the clerk please take the role?
Council President Collins?
Here.
Council Vice President DeCruz?
Here.
Councilwoman Kelso?
Here.
Councilman McAtee?
Here.
Councilman Vili?
Here.
All members present.
Thank you. Item four on our agenda is the public hearing relative to the adoption of the town council's final budget for FY 2019, 2020. It's shown on exhibit one attached to the agenda, and we're considering the following petitions pursuant to section 4222 of the town charter entitled Budget Petitions to the Council, seeking to amend the town council's preliminary FY 2019, 2020 budget adopted on Monday, March 18th, 2019. The first one is, shall line item number 400 entitled Debt Service Fund in the amount of $2,459,053 be increased by the sum of $165,000 to the amount of $2,624,053 for the purpose of restoring the debt service fund to the town manager's FY 2019, 2020 proposed budget amount by decreasing line item 0110-011098-41210, entitled Property Tax Transfer to the School Fund in the amount of $54,896,836 by the sum of $165,000 to the amount of So that's the first petition. The second one reads, shall line item number 101-22001 entitled Emergency Medical Services in the amount of $1,849,852 be increased by the sum of $200,000 to the amount of $2,49,852 for the purpose of adding paramedics to the EMS program by decreasing line item 0110-011098-41210, entitled Property Tax Transfer to the School Fund in the amount of $54,896,836 by the sum of $200,000 to the amount of $54,696,836. All right. That's a lot of words. Rob, do you want to say anything before we start talking about this?
At this point, I really, other than what we've just discussed in the work session and pretty much everyone in the room just heard that, I think we're, we're good to go.
All right. Well, this is a public hearing, and we'll get to the public comment, but first I want to give people up here the opportunity to say anything before we hear from the public, or we can wait until after. Well, I'm calling. I'm asking for comments up here if you want any first.
On the first, on the first item regarding the $165,000 taken from debt service, I thought that it was stressed to us pretty strongly that we needed the $500,000 going forward in 2024. We were gonna have a problem if we didn't have the $500,000. I understand completely why it was taken from debt service. It makes perfect sense to me, your explanation about why it was taken from there. And the other hesitation I have about, about this item is that when we take from debt service from operations, in my opinion, that's, that's risky. So if, if we leave or leave this transfer of the $165,000, for instance, we know that next year, the school budget starts $165,000 higher than if we didn't. And that's where the operational snowball, for me, is, is an issue. Do you want to just address the first one first?
This is open forum, so I mean, however you want to go. Does anybody--
Yeah, the only other thing I could add to that is I see why it was done, and I understand, and there was a decision made at the council level to fund for a certain level. But for me, I, when we were up here voting at that point, I was voting with the knowledge in my mind that we were at a $500,000 debt service still, you know, putting that aside for the future. And, you know, I do have concerns with making sure that in the future that we're gonna have enough money, and we know at 2024, even with $500,000 starting this year, we're still gonna be at a, a big negative at that point. So that's where my concern lies in regards to the $165,000. It's not, doesn't seem like a whole lot of money, but it's a lot of money when you're talking about debt service for something that we're gonna be spending quite a bit of money on in the future.
So I think we're all concerned that we, we took $165,000 from debt service. It's concerning. I do believe, however, we have several years to make up that $165,000. At $40,000 a year, we should be able to restore that fund by 2024, so we have a solid debt service fund by that time.
To reiterate some of Councilwoman Kelso's words, I do have confidence and am comfortable that we will be able to give the amounts necessary over the coming years through 2024 to restore that debt service fund. I think this year particularly, we're seeing extraordinary cuts by the school department. So in my opinion, allocating those funds and giving it to the property tax transfer is the right decision, in my opinion. As I've stated before, I really and truly believe that schools is the most important thing that we offer in this town, and ensuring that we have high-performing schools has to be a priority. It is for me, and it will continue to be. So I do have confidence that we will be able to restore that debt service fund going forward through 2024. As Deb had iterated, 40,000 per year, I think we should be able to appropriate those amounts accordingly.
Thanks, Roy. Yeah, from my perspective, I probably would have taken that $165,000 just out of our rainy day fund rather than making the policy choice to take it out of the, the debt service allocation. I do see it as sort of a capital expense almost, because it's going towards debt service on a capital expense. So, I mean, I would still be open to considering taking it from there and, and making that debt service amount whole, but I don't see taking it from the school funds as being a viable option this year. Do we want to talk about the second petition as well?
Yeah, I guess we can talk about it. We all know that, as the, from the council's perspective, we have to look at everything from schools, school funding, to police, to fire, well, not in this case, because we have a separate fire tax, but we do support them in other ways, to all the other departments that we have to run on the municipal side for everyone in town. And schools are definitely important. They're the backbone of our community, but at the same time, you know, we want to make sure that if there's an emergency in town somewhere, that the response time is a reasonable response time. Whether or not, you know, you hear some stories about response times being lengthy. I haven't done any research in regards to that or asked, you know, for a breakdown of response times, but I do feel that we need to figure out a way to not wait till 20, was it 2021 you mentioned? I think it needs to move faster than that in, in order just, because I, I think at the end of the day, I don't want to go to bed at night, you know, if something were to happen, knowing that one extra EMS vehicle at night might have made a difference in saving someone.
So again, during the work session, we described two ways it could be done. One requires $25,000 not currently in the budget to be put in the budget, and that would get you to a format, four-person crew next fiscal year. That would have us floating two folks in the schedule for this, starting in January of 2020, and then getting you to the four-person crew in July of 2020. That requires $25,000 that are currently not allocated for that purpose. The other way to do it is to stagger it longer and make do with what we have available in the current budget.
So Trish, you mentioned that 300,000 was the budget number approximately, but conservatively 100,000 would be made up in fees collected, bringing it down to approximately 200,000 for the year?
Yeah.
Would there, would there be any way of funding half of that to start in, say, December? Or in the middle of the fiscal year at, at four?
Are you talking about funding four as of January, July 2019, the beginning of this budget?
January.
January four, so that would be $150,000 if we brought all four on in January.
Do you think we would make up the 50 as well, or are we just talking about $150,000 in total expense?
In total expense, you'll need to increase their budget by $150,000, because each EMS is about $75,000. That's 300,000, so half of that's $150,000.
But not taking into account any reimbursement or--
Well, then you could increase the, the EMS billing revenues by $50,000 conservatively, so the net impact to the taxpayers are 100, is $100,000.
Thank you.
So I would be willing to sacrifice the council's $60,000 fund to help offset the EMS costs. Now, we'd be looking for 40,000 then?
Well, no. So at that point, as I understood it, the initial discussions, the EMS director claims that he thinks he could reduce his overtime cost by 50,000. So if the council were to decrease their council contingency by 50,000, we reduce the overtime budget in EMS by 50,000, there's $100,000 there, right? So we would need to find another $50,000 somehow.
To make this happen in, in January?
To make this happen in January.
January of 2020.
Correct.
Not July, we're not speaking about July of 2019. We're speaking about--
January. So you're bringing all four on for six months.
And July 19 is not possible because of the facilities challenges.
Correct. But you would, you were still planning on bringing, remind me, because I don't recall, you were still planning on bringing one in, was that--
January of 2020 or two in in January 2020.
Okay.
Now, the two, again, only, two in January 2020 plus two in July 2020, next fiscal year, only requires $25,000 additional funding out of a source yet to be identified, that council account or what have you.
I personally--
Getting to four is tough.
I think the 25,000 from the council account makes sense in terms of the pace of bringing new people on. And then I would also say, there's a couple other requests that, you know, we should think about tonight in terms of the tri-county, and I'd be looking at those funds for that as well. Any other discussion on the petition?
So just for clarification, because it's a little bit muddy, to start, to add two in January of 2020 would only take 25,000?
Right, so it'd be--
Because of the overtime savings?
It would be $75,000, and you would reduce the overtime budget by 50, and then the gap is the 25,000.
50 for 12-month period or six?
Six.
So overtime is 100,000?
No, his overtime is--
No, meaning, I'm sorry, if it was a year, he'd be able to reduce it by 100, or is it--
That's conservative.
Yeah, okay.
And then the only other-- No, who am I kidding? It's not the only other. The other thing I want to clarify, in my opinion, and I'm, I'm not speaking on either of these at this point, the school property tax transfer is increased over last year. The school budget in its entirety is increased over last year. So when we refer to cuts, it's a reduction of the increase. So there's a, there's a, a very important distinction there. When we have a, what looks like, if this budget passes, about a $21,000 to $21,500 per student, with a reduction from March of last year to March of this year of 141 students, I think it's an important distinction to make that the property tax transfer in the total school budget is more. So when we refer to cuts, there are decreases, there are adjustments and increases. I think that's an important distinction to make.
Clearly, there's a need to address the EMS problems in town. Now, unfortunately, I disagree with this petition in reducing the amount of the property tax transfer by 200,000 and moving it over to EMS services. I understand that there is an issue there, and we do want to look at ways to resolve or remedy the EMS time intervals it takes to, you know, it could be the difference between life and death. And I agree with some of these proposals that we've agreed, or we've brought attention to tonight. I definitely agree with the idea of reducing the account toward contingency council in the amount of 25,000 to ensure that we have two additional EMS workers for the six months ended July 2020. But yeah, I do understand it is an issue, and it's something that we cannot look away from. You know, unfortunately, at this time, the budget is tight, as we all know. So that's where I stand in regard to that, as I will reiterate. I do believe, you know, funding the schools adequately is, is the top priority. Now, obviously EMS is at the top there as well, but in regard to where we are, this is where I stand. Thank you.
I just have a quick question, Trish. So we haven't spent any of the $65,000 this year from the council fund, right?
Yes.
Okay. And in next year's budget, how much do we have allocated, the same amount?
65.
65? So that's 130,000. Would it be crazy if we were to move that money?
You can't do that for personnel, personnel, personnel costs. You can't transfer money as a holdover for personnel. It's not appropriate accounting practices.
What could we transfer that over for then?
Capital, which is what we typically do in June.
Okay.
We sometimes will appropriate that money for OPEB liabilities, termination reserve. We've had a lot of retirements, and we've had to dip into our termination reserve fund, and that's, our policy is at 80%. We're down to 50, so we're gonna have to start looking to replenish. We've had some, you know, tenured employees leaving the town, so we've had to use that fund quite a bit over the last few years. So we're gonna need some money to replenish and bring our funding ratio of that liability up to 80%, which is a best practice.
Could we take some of the council funds and allocate it towards the future debt service, or no?
Well, certainly, we can--
Okay, back to debt service?
We can, yeah, we can reallocate it. Mm-hmm.
Any other comments up here?
Thank you.
I would say, although the total dollar amount going to the schools is-- I would say, although the total dollar amount going to the schools has increased, and the total dollar amount of spending by the town has increased by about 1.5% or 1.6% between there somewhere, that's actually lower than the rate of inflation, so the total real spending is actually declining year over year.
What is the rate of inflation currently?
I believe it's about 2.1.
2.1, yeah.
And we have a pretty severe reduction in enrollment, so.
Nevertheless, the point stands, that spending is declining. So at this point, do we need to vote during the public hearing on the petitions, or does that come after we close the public hearing? Okay. All right, are there any more comments at the table?
I guess I just want to clarify something. Oh, you're referring to the transfer to the school fund, right, from 1.75 being less than the 2.1 inflation rate?
No, total program for the town, so 1.5, 6%.
Okay.
All right, well, then we'll have public comment. So this is your opportunity to, you know, you can address the petitions themselves, you can talk about other differences in spending that you'd like to see us enact tonight. It's a first come, first served. Going to try and keep people to three minutes tonight. Some people might go a little bit longer, it happens, but do try to keep your comments concise. Again, this is a public hearing, so there's a lot of emotion attached to this budget, but try to keep the applause to a minimum tonight and go through this quickly. And yeah, so come up to the podium, state your name for the record, and thank you.
Gary Chapman, Wakefield. I was the petitioner for the debt service. And the reason why I put that petition forward was because the night that you debated on the transfer to the school funds, I mean, if you remember back to that night, you went back and forth several times. It was going to be 1%, and then you could only get two votes, you couldn't get three. And then it went to 1 and 3/4, and you didn't want to give them that, you wanted to give them more, so we kept going back and forth. But there were several instances where you made reference back to the finance director and to the town manager about, well, what is the most that we can give them and stay underneath the 4% cap? I think that was where you were. And if the 4% cap was 165 less than where it is, like it is today, that's what you would have done. You wouldn't have taken five, you wouldn't have taken it from 500. I know you wouldn't have that night. So that's why I put the petition in, because you really never voted on that. I wanted you to take a vote on that, because that night, you took a vote, and you wanted to give the schools as much as you possibly could and stay under the 4% cap. You never mentioned taking any money out of the debt service, because we know what we're going to have. The school buildings facility plan is going to be the biggest debt that this town will ever take on. And we, and the finance director put together a plan so that the town could afford it. And now we're in the very first year of putting money in that debt service, we're going to take $165,000 out and use it for operations. I mean, that, I just don't think you would have done that. That's why I am asking you now to take another vote on that. That's what's that, okay? Then the other, on the EMS portion of it, you know, we've heard all the stories about how long it takes. We're talking about just running a 24-hour shift, that's just the night shift. They run out of the day shift from the old police station now. We're talking about running from the night shift, okay, from the old police station. Now, you have lots of money in the capital improvement budget to renovate the station, but I think you should take a look at that before we go any further on how much money you really want to spend there, because that is not, that's going to improve service from the 108 station, absolutely, to the South Shore, but it's not the ideal situation. We need to be in Mattoonik. EMS needs to be in Mattoonik. It needs to have a facility there to handle the South Shore. It's too far from the old police station. So I wouldn't spend a million dollars or whatever you want to spend, and obviously, it's not a million dollars, but I'm just being facetious, but I mean, I wouldn't spend a ton of money on the old police station for EMS. I'd do it for the next two or three or four years until you can figure out what we're going to do long-term, because really, long-term, you need to think about that. And that's, you know, something where you need to be closer. It's still a ways away. So, and the other portion is, if you're tossed between taking the money from the school department, then I guess EMS, to me, is one of the most important things you can do. You know, you're saving residents' lives. If we need to get four people on as soon as possible, and if January's the date, that's fine. If they ran overtime, you'd take the money from undesignated fund balance, because that's the only place you'd do it. This is a serious issue. I mean, you know, if you need $100,000 from undesignated funds, I mean, we have $12 million in undesignated funds. I mean, I can't think of any better use for that money than to do that. And we can then replenish the undesignated funds in years as we go on. But right now, that's where I think we really need to consider, you know, the health and safety of the residents of this town, and if that helps out, we should do it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, Emily Kamisky. We've been looking for a place where our entire town, our entire community could come together and move forward without a further divide, and I would like to think that everybody in this room tonight feels the same way that I'm hearing a lot of you up here feel, and that is, we need to fund both EMS and the schools. And I really don't think that one should be, that money should be taken from one to fund the other. I think we need to make some hard decisions as a town to figure out how to fund both. So here's an opportunity for us to all come together, no matter what side of any argument you stand on, but to really move forward and fund both of these really, really important programs, because both the schools and EMS are serving the entire community. So I hope that that's what the majority of people are here to say tonight. Thank you.
You have two petitions before you this evening.
Just state your name for the...
Oh, I'm sorry, Marion Crawford, I'm sorry, Marion Crawford, CFO, not the community I'm from. One, reducing the school budget by 165,000, and the second, reducing the school budget by 200,000 for a grand total of $365,000. The school district respectfully requests that you not approve these petitions this evening. Over the last four months, the school committee worked closely with various stakeholder groups and made numerous difficult decisions to present what we consider a fiscally responsible budget. The budget approved by the council a few weeks ago included the following reductions. Some of these, I'm sure you're well aware of, so I'll reiterate them relatively quickly. 21.7 teachers' FTEs, four administrative exempt staff FTEs, 11 teacher assistant clerks' FTEs, and a .5 custodian FTE, for a total of 37.2 FTEs. In addition, we reduced the non-personnel items in the budget by $748,000. If these petitions before you this evening were to be approved, the district will need to make further reductions in areas that the school committee has already discussed. These items include the following, and not limited to the following: a Broadrock and the high school guidance counselor, the late bus, additional high school clerk, high school family-consuming engagement teacher, Curtis Corner summer school, another .5 custodian, and 1 to 2 teacher assistants. During closing, the school committee respectfully requests the town council not approve these two petitions before you receive.
Marion, before you leave, I don't mean to put you on the spot here, can you remind me if the SMILE program is funded at this point, or if the funds have been...
It is not.
And how much was that for that program? Wasn't...
It goes $17,000 or something like that?
Something like that, yeah. I'd have to double-check that number.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name's Martha Bedigian. I work in the school system, I think you know. And I just thought, a couple of thoughts. I'm not sure if you, I'm sure you know, but maybe you, I'd like to give you anecdotal evidence of what's been happening in our schools over the past eight or so years of the Funding Formula reduction. A microcosm, I'm a librarian. When I started, we, I mean, everything in America was different 10 years ago, right? But we had assistants, we had like three, three and a half librarians going between four schools, five initially, then four, pretty healthy book budgets. Today, it's been decimated. The assistants have been gone for five or six years. Book budgets are about a quarter of what they used to be. You know, we have two librarians covering four schools, and you know, we like our work. We feel happy to be doing what we're doing, but if, I cannot tell you that the programs haven't been heavily impacted by what's already been happening in the schools. The cuts that have already been made this year are sort of frightening to the people in the system, because they are, we're cutting to bone now. The thought of cutting more is incomprehensible to me. The SMILE program, I was a SMILE teacher two years ago. I can tell you, these are kids who no one in their family went to college. We went on field trips to Alton Jones, we visited URI, and these kids all of a sudden could see in themselves, hey, I can walk around on this campus. And who gave them the tour? Former SMILE kids who were then students at URI. Nothing more powerful. I've seen a sort of degradation in our system, and I really am sincere in telling you this. So I'm a little afraid of what further reductions will do, and I totally respect all the community members and everyone's concerns, and obviously, you know, health is right, is equivalently important. But if there's another way, one other thought is, this is a very transitional time for our district. We're going to be bringing Curtis Corner offline in the next couple of years, going to have a significant impact on expenses. Our facilities renovations are probably going to be making the schools a little more attractive if we can just keep our programs intact. That would go a long way towards continuing to have this be an attractive school system. I want to ask you, you know, we're not, the schools aren't asking you to give something over and over and over again. This is a very difficult transitional period, and so I think we're asking your support to get us through this period, and I think you can see how hard people are working to do the best they can to make the most reductions they can. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Don't be afraid of that microphone.
I'm certainly in support of both of these petitions. What you heard earlier from Mr. Chapman, what you really need to understand, EMS, our area along the coastline, South Shore, we had another 5, 7, 8,000 folks there each summer from June till July. I'm telling you, we are really short. And when I mentioned what the manager spoke, or excuse me, the gentleman that ran the EMS department, when he spoke about the shortages, that area of town was quite concerned, because Charleston will be even busier, because they almost doubled their population in their own town. Who's going to cover our western side of South Kingstown? This is imperative that this get done now, and as soon as possible to have that facility in full operational with the next drivers, equipment, you name it, but you're not understanding the residential increase that we go through from May through October. I don't understand why, at the last meeting, when you kicked around the 1%, the 2 and 1/2%, it's really too bad we didn't know about the under 65,000, because that probably could have been addressed in that razzle-dazzle part of the evening, and we really should have. I've never seen anything like this, where we're borrowing once again from the future. You just don't understand. Apparently, the five of you know a lot more about this economy than I do, and I get very worried, and even a lot of the House and Senate members are very worried about what the May conference, revenue conference board is going to come up with up in Providence at the State House. November was a real worry. You can't tell me what's going to happen in May and forward for next year, nor can you tell me what the next two, three, four years are going to be like, that, oh, we'll just supplement it, put some more money in. What you're all forgetting, and I was on the council back in 2009, 10, 11, 12, we had 0%, 0, two years in a row for the school department. Five members of the council, we're all Democrats, I was an independent Democrat, we said, no, we understand we have a problem here. You don't give away future money for operationals now. This makes no sense, no business with, nobody would do this. Absolutely makes no sense whatsoever. One year ago, matter of fact, one year ago Saturday, Governor Raimondo was down here. She said, we've got to run leaner, we've got to run better. Her campaign after that for governor, as well as the bond issue that was passed, the $250 million for new capacity, newer and fewer. She said it, leaner, newer, and fewer. We're the only place in Rhode Island that doesn't understand what she's saying. And I bring that up because I've asked for 10 years since Superintendent Bob Hicks said back in '09 and '10 and '11, before Ms. Stringfellow came on board, we can close Curtis Corner School. The population tells us we can do that. And that's when we had 3,650 kids. Now we're down another 750. What gives? What doesn't, what doesn't the school committee understand? But you're allowing them to get away with that. Matter of fact, I think they'd lose less teachers by closing that Curtis Corner School, and would probably save a few hundred thousand more on transportation costs. There's $800,000, $850,000 of equivalent money sitting there that we don't want to correctly manage. And schools are about management too. Believe me, education, number one, no question about it, but if it's mismanaged, it's worth nothing to the community, because then you'll have to cut twice as much in the next time or four times after that. If you cannot manage your facilities, which the governor is begging us to do, and that's why I have brought to your attention for eight years in a row, the Education Funding Formula. What I say is truthful. Numbers don't lie. And from fiscal year 2011 to '12, we are the only one of our cohorts to lose money from the Education Funding Formula, and it's not a few hundred thousand. 8.9 million in fiscal year 11, '12, 5.3 this year, and no one else, no one else, not even a wealthy community like Narragansett, Westerly, North Kingstown, East Greenwich, Barrington, none of them have lost a penny. That's my proof. Rhode Island Department of Education says we are spending too much money, and none of you really brought up this issue during this entire budget season. Thank you.
I just want to talk about some simple concepts with both petitions. The first being on the balance of municipal versus school spending. You've seen some of the things that I've talked to you about, some of the things I've written. Compared to Connecticut, we're spending less per capita in our municipal spending, but more, significantly more per pupil in our school spending. That imbalance, we're feeling that pressure. We've been feeling that pressure for 20 years. That's why we see these things like the EMS come up, the Arboris, all these different things come up because of this imbalance. One of these petitions gives... One of these petitions gives you an opportunity to not just creatively fund an EMS program, but figure out a way to start moving that balance into, into a healthy place where we can be ready to fund some big facilities, overhauls and everything. The second part is on the buildings. And I just want to go through the basic discussions. We know where we've been with these building plans. A year ago, six months ago, it was a very different proposition. That has changed. The priorities have changed. We have a different scope of work. It's, it's more expensive, it's more burden on the property taxpayer. And going the opposite way in the debt service isn't necessarily the most responsible thing. In the end, the kind of creativity that I'm, I'm seeing with funding these different initiatives outside of this petition process is really just increasing spending by borrowing from the balance sheet. And you have an opportunity now to look at this and take what now could be even as, we have the, the stage two application, the building thing, in the building plans that has gone in and been bounced back, is now might be changing with the possibility, there's discussions about a new scope of work that might even be more debt service. And we're going in the opposite direction in pre-funding that. We might be able to do it at forty thousand dollars a month, but it, it's, it's very clear, it's borrowing from the future in a period of declining enrollment, in a, in a time when we are, as, even as in the town manager's budget message, one of the most expensive places per pupil to educate a kid in the nation. So these aren't the extreme requests that we're being, that, that, we're being accused of. They're responsible requests. They're not, they're not what, what, what we're here. So that's all I wanted to say. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Olivia Zito, and I'm a senior at South Kingston High School right now. As a senior, I could selfishly sit back and kind of ignore all the issues regarding the funding of the schools. And I'm not going to lie, I'm a kid, and I, all of the money talk is confusing to me, but I do realize that there are cuts being made in our school district, or at least talks of cuts being made. I've been in the school district since I was in kindergarten. And both of my parents are teachers, and I'm aware of the issues with funding. And over the years, I know that there are always discussions of teachers being laid off and everything, and it's all very confusing. But one thing I can say is that I don't want, just because I'm leaving the school district, I want to leave, I want to have other kids in the future have the same experience that I've had. And I know that every single teacher that I've encountered, every single program that I've gone through in the school, whether it be through music or other educational academic things, I want every other kid to have the same opportunity that I've had. And I think that cutting any teachers or programs would be detrimental to every kid's experience in our school district. And I don't want any of these opportunities to be taken away. I think that there are a lot of things that our school district have to offer. And I realize that schools also become kind of like a business now. And I realize that we need to be drawing people in from other places, and that our school is offering pathways and things now that are really important. But I also think that it's important for all kids to have the same opportunity to have creative outlets, whether it be through music or pursuing pathways. That's all I would like to say. I just want to make sure that our voices are heard and that if there are any cuts that are made, that would be, that would result in losing teachers, that the students' voices are also being heard and taken into account. Because I've been touched by every single teacher, every single class I've gone through, and I don't want any of the other kids to miss out on that opportunity. Thank you.
Council, first of all, Dan North of Wakefield, Rhode Island. I want to thank you for your time and your efforts. It's a trying time for all of us. First thing I would like to ask, and Rob, this is directed towards you. There are safer grants and homeland security grants to ease in the factor of more municipality in regards of EMS and/or fire, but in our case, it's not fire. I've, I one hundred and ten percent support EMS. I work with them hand in hand. I'm a big part of the first responders of this town. I would like to think that we've reached out. I know you've missed the deadline for this year. But I know it offsets the year, you know, it's a three-year aspect where it's worked in for the annual budgets. And I'd like to know where we stand if we did that.
So the SAFER Grant Program is Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response. It's actually a grant program that I helped write when I was a Senate staffer.
I know that.
Or Senator Dodd. It's a good program. It's a program that allows municipalities either training dollars or staffing dollars. And it's one of the reasons that we've been thinking about a long-term strategy, is trying to figure out where the grant money might be to help offset the cost at startup. We have not made a SAFER Grant application, but it is certainly one of the things we can do to try and offset the cost. If we were to go with a program that has all of the funding in this year, we're not going to get a SAFER Grant. It's not going to happen. If we have a year in which that, that money is needed to get us to full staffing, then we've got at least the basis for an application. Nothing is guaranteed when you're writing a grant. So, you know, we, we can't rely on it, but we could certainly make the application.
Not to cut you off, but however, you know, the inception of the paid EMS into this town was tanked from the beginning. South County Ambulance Corps, or some people know it as SCARC, okay, had four rescues on duty. From inception of SKIMS, or South County, or South Kingston EMS, they've only ever had, they had the one, and then we've worked into a second one from seven to seven, seven AM to seven PM. So they've been, they've been behind the eight ball from the get-go. It, it's, I can tell you right now that when Socket is putting on eight firefighter and EMS as we speak, eight individuals on a SAFER Grant spread out over three years. I mean, that's phenomenal money. And how do we miss that? Go ahead, by all means.
So, yeah, I mean, we, we also don't have a grant writer on staff. These things take effort. We've got volunteers who have come forward in the last couple of weeks who've said they'd be willing to work with us to get an application in. We know how the process works. It's, it's a staffing question. We have to stabilize EMS. And we've had a number of challenges that we have faced. And frankly, the director has succeeded in addressing many of the issues. The Southern Station is the next challenge. And, and we're ready for it now.
Yeah, I'm aware of that.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't have said that a year ago. We weren't ready to start a four-person crew doing twenty-four, seven.
I, I guess what I'm saying, the SAFER Grant's been out there for many, many years, five to seven years.
Fifteen, actually.
Fifteen, thank you. And how we've missed that and been undermanned since inception is mind-boggling to me as a taxpayer. And now all of a sudden, and I'm all about them, I work hand in hand with them, you know, now it's a big push to, you know, take money from a school to, to do this, when there's, there's aspects out there. If for fifteen years, we never put a grant writer on?
The program also is one that's been better known in the fire service than in, in the EMS service, so.
Hand in hand.
Well, yes and no. Ours is, is very separate from the fire service, so.
Different dynamic, I understand. But, and the other thing I would like to address is the, in regards to the petitions, is, and I understand there's decline enrollment, and I get that every day, okay? But if you take, I believe, Joe, Mr. Veely, you spoke of a hundred and twenty-one decline, okay? And that is spread out over what, twelve grades? Am I correct? Okay, so you take a hundred and twenty-one over twelve grades, divide that, you still have to turn the lights on, you still have to have the teacher there. It doesn't have, that amount of people doesn't have a big enough impact over four schools, essentially two middle schools and one high school, to make that much of an impact to where we've lost five million dollars in state aid. It's just, the numbers don't add up in that sense.
I don't disagree with you. I, I understand from previous budget years that there's no question that if you have an enrollment decline of two percent, that doesn't mean you can knock out a second grade or a third grade or a fourth grade. I understand all that. This twelve-month decline is substantially more than what I've seen in the last four budget.
It is projected, and I understand that, too.
And I understand, and there are reductions in, in full-time equivalent staff. I understand that, but.
Right, but what I'm saying is that one, that a hundred and twenty-one individual decline in enrollment, that doesn't substantiate.
Yes.
Less classes, less teachers, less personnel, because it's spread out over twelve grades.
No, and I understand that. It is one forty-one, and it, but it's five percent. So I understand that you, you may not be able to reduce a section. But the five years that I've been looking at these budgets, it's continual. And I understand that there are full-time equivalent reductions in this budget. I get that. But again, the four previous budget years, we saw less of a decline. I think we're starting to see something pretty significant.
It is projected, and I think last year's projections actually ended up being a little bit more than what we thought. Am I mistaken there? So.
I think you're right, but.
So I, I think we can prepare ourselves for that a little bit.
Again, it, it's a dialogue. I think it's, I hope it's a moving number. I hope it's not continually moving in, in only the down direction.
Yeah, I, I just don't want to see us cut us nose off to spite our face in regards to, similar to what Newport did, where now they're looking for more space for their elementary students.
Yep.
That's, that's a big issue. That could predominantly be a huge issue. So.
Abel?
I was just going to note that we've gone a little beyond the three minutes here.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Ryan Muir. I'm a teacher at the high school, resident, and I have kids in the school system. It seems, it seems like a very short-sighted conversation to me. As stated before, I, I, I think these both should be funded equally. It's kind of, this seems like a, we're talking in, it seems like we're talking in circles. The goal of, of making our schools better is to draw, draw young families into our district. And by these cuts that are just coming, seemingly coming out of, out of nowhere, at least to, to some of us, seems like this is the opposite effect it will have. Even, even in the short term, even in this year, people hearing about more cut, I mean, there are lots of cuts coming. And we're talking about more cuts coming. And we're trying to bring in families, you know, that, that's how it starts. You have families with their kids that come in, and they provide taxes to help fund EMS. And it, it seems like if we're just attacking this system all the time, it's just going to keep, it's going to keep snowballing, keep snowing, and we keep taking from us to give to other people. It, it just doesn't make sense to me. I, I think, as I've heard before, we, we can find a way to fund EMS, and we, we should do that. And I think there's a way to do it. I mean, again, this is not, I'm, I'm in awe of what you guys do, but it's, there's got to be a way to not have, you know, our, our elderly population are here, and they're, people vacation here in the summer, and that's really important. And they're here, you know, non-residents come here and live, you know, June, July, and August. But then there's all these kids who live here all year round. And we want families coming in, providing taxes to help pay for these things. And that's just, I, I just feel like it, it's cyclical, and we're just going to be in this rut of continually jabbing at our district and jabbing at everything that we're trying to, to build. So I, I hope you consider not taking any more money from these programs, all these programs. It just seems absurd to me. Thanks.
Good evening. David Ladotti, Wakefield. I just wanted to say that I'm very happy that I believe that I heard tonight that on January first of two thousand twenty, the second rescue will be manned twenty-four hours a day out of the old police station. And I just want to say I'm very happy about that. But to Gary and Jim's point regarding service to Mattoonik, I think Gary made a great point that the old police station, while it is not ideal, it is all we have, but it is not a great place to have that second rescue because to go to the south end neighborhoods, it has to go down south on Route One and then make a U-turn and cross two lanes of high-speed traffic on a divided highway to get to the exits that it needs to get to to serve Snug Harbor or Mattoonik or Green Hill. The ideal location to position that truck would be the corner of Mattoonik Beach Road and Route One North, where it could go just a short run down Mattoonik Beach Road to access Mattoonik or Green Hill. And if it had to go to Snug Harbor, it could gently merge onto Route One North, going with the flow of traffic, not having to cross any oncoming traffic and exit at Snug, at Snug Harbor. Also, if it had to go to Wakefield, it could shoot up One North and exit at any one of four exits, Marina Park, Pond Street, Woodruff Avenue, or the Wakefield exit by the Muncsini Clark School. That would be a very quick and easy way to get into downtown Wakefield. In my, in my opinion, Mattoonik Beach Road and US One North is the ideal location. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm a junior at South Kingston High School. My name is Caroline, and I'm not heavily informed on this topic, so I'm going to keep this very brief. But unlike my peer Olivia, I have not always grown up in South Kingston. I moved here when I was in eighth grade. And I lived in a much smaller town before, so our school didn't have the same opportunities that SK did. So I saw firsthand how amazing this school is. I mean, I can attest every day that we are creating the future lawyers, doctors, politicians. I mean, it is amazing. All these students have so many opportunities in our school, and I would just hate to see that change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Deb Bergner. I live in Mattoonik. I signed the petitions to fund EMS and to correct the debt service error. And I didn't think I'd have to come up here and explain why I signed the petitions. As a citizen, it's provided for in the charter, so I didn't think I'd end up here. However, I was selectively singled out as one of the signers, so I thought I would come and at least provide some context about why my husband and I signed the, the petitions. Some of you know me, and some of you know me well, but I'll just tell a little bit of my story. And I've never really said it out loud before in a group like this, so give me a sec. But back in November, I pretty much lived a parent's worst nightmare. And my husband and I were just sleeping on the couch watching TV and got a phone call that my son was hurt in an accident in Virginia. And six hours later, I was on a plane, and I didn't come back to South Kingston for three and a half weeks. We lived with backpacks and, at the Ronald McDonald House. And it took me a long time to process what happened, and it was really horrific. And at the end of January, I got to meet the first responders that helped my son. And they knew where he was and knew what to do, and saved his life probably, and gave him to me and my husband. So when you talk about EMS, it's highly, highly personal and highly, highly relevant in my current world. And so I signed that petition to talk to you tonight, to ask you to make it a priority to fund it, to fund it for people here. Maybe I want to pay it forward because that's the right thing to do. And I, I'm really not concerned with how you find the funds. I'm asking you to find the funds for everyone that I care about and the people that I don't even know. In the summer, we're going to surge to a huge population increase. I live in Mattoonik, I see it. We, we were here at that budget hearing when we, we heard about traffic and the need to add another traffic officer. That was a very moving and powerful night, and we're not really funding that yet. So I'm encouraged at the beginning of the work session to hear you talk about ways to find it. I know you're getting closer to the money. And I think one of the areas that you haven't maybe thought of tonight was you have some salary increases from, for some non-contractual employees that you could use, maybe that's, it sounded to me like you were in the twenty-five to thirty thousand range, maybe you could look there. I, I'm not here to beat up on the schools or anything. My kids, I have three kids, I, thirty-six years of public education with my kids here in South Kingston. So I'm not going to knock one thing about education. I'm here to ask you to find the funding and to make it a priority for everyone. And. I'm here to ask you to find the funding and to make it a priority for everyone. And that's it. Thanks.
Mark Levitt. We will be adding two new children to your school system in, I guess it's September. And I'm looking forward to them being there. And I'm looking forward to them not only just being there, but I'm looking forward to them to being part of a community that's on the rise, not on the downfall. I want them to be part of a community that sees themselves as part of an optimistic vision, not only of this community, but of the nation itself. We're in the vice grips right now. We're all... And there's nobody's fault in this situation. I mean, there's fault to be pointed to, but we are all feeling a certain pinch, a sense of pressure, the fact that we don't know what's gonna happen around the corner. I don't want them to feel that when they're in the school. I want them to understand the optimism and positiveness of this country and of this community that they're part of. I want the EMS to be funded. I think it's a great idea to be funded. I want the schools to be funded as well. I want the children to be able to go in there and have new books. I want them to know that they have teachers that are going to be there year after year after year after year. And I want us to take a stand, not to fall into the trap of lethargy and depression that surrounds us right now in this culture. I want us to be able to grasp the possibilities of being able to, within this community, make a change, not only here, but for the state and for the country itself. And to do that, we need a commitment in areas that we might be scared of following. We need to go out of our zone of fear and our zone of comfort, and we need to slightly move into an area of possibility rather than projected dismay and depression. To me, that's what this is about. How are we going to take a stand at this point in our community, not to go further down, but to say collectively that we are interested in creating something in spite of the lethargy and the problems that's going on through our country and our world? I understand it takes money, but I am willing, for instance, and I'm sure we're all going to do this, if you have trouble with EMS, I'll do anything you need to raise the money for it. I'll perform. I'll show my films. I don't care what it was. But we need to all gather together the same way I would do that for you. I would hope you would do it for me and the children there. It's obviously not one or the other, because we all benefit from the power and the confidence that's instilled when a collective can get together within a community and say we are not going to fall victim to the sadness and depression of our culture at this point. So I would ask you, when you are dealing with these issues, realize, and there is... And this I want to bring up in addition to my willingness to help with whatever you need for the EMS, there is also going to be, and I don't know particularly, but maybe someone out there knows better than I do, there's going to be a discussion about funding, school funding, I guess on Monday, in a couple of days. Someone can come up and say that. But there's a need for you people, and you people out there, to come and be part of us, those with children in the schools and those who understand the value of the schools, and someone who knows it better than I do can come up and do that. But without that kind of cooperation, without that sense that we're not going to, as a community, succumb to bitterness and backbiting, and the sense that if I get something, you're not gonna get something. It's not that way. It's not about you get something and I lose something. It's about we all work together to build a community that we all are not only proud of being here, but that have a joy in being here. Joy is the essence of education. Joy is the essence of taking care of each other. Joy is the essence that we need to work in and start from, as we work together, to deny that we're going to be taken into the depression and the passivity and the lack of optimism that's surrounded all of us. We're not gonna be there. Thank you.
Doral Beasley, live in Kingston. Okay, so Mrs. Bergner came up here, and she said that her name had gotten highlighted. So this is what happened, ladies and gentlemen. There was a meeting here in this building, at which the two petitions are certified. Within an hour of their certification, copies of these documents with the signatures were on the internet, on Facebook. It was like the second coming of the Mueller report. You had redacted names, so probably on this page. Jim, your name's here, but I guess everybody else was blacked out. I don't know what it was. Was it like shaming people, you know, that they signed this? Is that what we've come to in this town? Yeah, okay. I think... You know, when I got into this facilities thing, I had no clue I was gonna become obsessed with it. And because as the days and the weeks and the months went on, it was just everything... It became all... So many things are affecting the decisions we're making for our schools, for our town. A 33% drop in our student population since the year 2000. That is just astonishing. This district, South Kingston, used to be one of the top three, the big three: Barrington, East Greenwich, South Kingston. You could flip a coin 30 years ago, which one was the best. We are no longer there. We're not even close. You know, there's things on the internet if you go to find out whether you want to move someplace. Well, there's one called School Digger. It's one of them. And they had their rankings a couple of months ago. Last year, South Kingston was number nine, number nine in the list. And this year, we're at 17. And it says right at the top, "2018 Rankings For Rhode Island Schools Were Revived On February 4th To Include The Roycast Math In 2000, we had 520 people working here for 4,400 kids. Today, we have 485 for 2,900 kids. So in 2000, we had eight and a half kids for every employee. Today, it's six to one. We're spent... Next year, after they're gonna have a... The school committee is gonna do a new contract for the teachers. So absolutely, next year, our per-student costs are gonna be over $22,000. It'll be the highest in the state. It's so far above other districts. It's just astonishing. It's criminal. If we had kept that 8.5 students-per-employee ratio, today, there'd be 350 people working in this district, 130 people less. So you know what that is? That's $13 million a year, because this year, the average employee, if you do it and everything, it's $100,000 apiece, including benefits. $13 million, that's why... That's why we're in this mess. You would think in a $98 million town budget, we could find enough money to get the two paramedics this year. Wouldn't you say... Wouldn't you think so? Okay.
Mr. Beasley, just... We're four minutes now.
I know you like me to... I know you'd like me to shut up, but I'm not gonna shut up tonight, so that's just the way it is. In 2011, I almost lost my hand in an accident. Now, luckily, my car was right below where I was when it happened, so I was able to get down, get in my car. I severed both arteries, my wrist, seven or 10 tendons, and the only thing that was holding my hand onto what was left was my glove. Luckily, I was three-quarters a mile from the Kingston Fire Station, which I know is manned, or somebody there all day long, probably EMS guys from the student crews. If I had been, say, half a mile in the woods off of Gravel Hill Road, I probably wouldn't be here today, because I lost so much blood. I was going into shock as I was driving there. So our elected legislators from South Kingston in the House, they just voted, all three of them, for the evergreen bill. That means that if a school... If you have a negotiation still made between the teachers' union and the district, then if this gets signed by the governor, that means that that contract can stay in effect forever until the town, I guess, comes back in caves or whatever they want to do. And just about a few days before that, Rhode Island's firefighters today are the highest-paid firefighters in this country before they changed it to give them more overtime. I'm sure anybody that had the Providence Journal saw this yesterday, giving unions the checkbook. That's what we've done in this town. NEARI runs our school district. And it runs our school district because, for the last 20 years at least, the majorities of the town council and the school committee have been affiliated, or maybe not affiliated, but they've been on those committees for one purpose, and the purpose is to keep as many people working in a district as possible. People, they don't care about the students. They do not. If you don't believe me, go onto the website, NEARI, look at their goals. It's on the website. So when it comes to the cuts, I got about a minute. So when it comes to the cuts, so how it works is superintendent formulates a budget, works off the one from the prior year, they look at the programs, they match the people, the programs, and then they have the first negotiations with you guys, and you come back and you say, well, that's too much or too little, whatever, right? So then they go back and they come up with a list of cuts. Okay, the things they cut this year, like smiles and all that stuff, textbooks, technology, $100,000 for middle school, middle school intramural athletics after school. That is so important. Not every kid is so skilled that they make a varsity team. It's so important for those kids to be able to do that after school. We cut those. We cut those so we can continue to have a ratio of employee, student to employees, that's just outrageous. In any way, we're gonna be able to afford to fix our schools the proper way, that ratio has to come down, and it has to come down fast.
Hi, Lauren Weinstein. I wasn't planning to speak tonight, but Mr. Levitt's comments about lethargy and depression and the anger I hear in the room really inspired me. As a psychologist, I can't help but think about what drives lethargy and depression and what drives anger. And what drives depression is helplessness and hopelessness. What drives anger is perceptions of injustice. What I really like to say, which doesn't speak directly to the petitions, but as a resident of our community, is that I actually have a lot of hope for our community. I see a lot of good in our community. I see a lot of good in our schools. I see that in my son, who didn't want to have spring break, because he loved school so much, he wanted to go back to school right away. Like, to me, that speaks wonders about the environment we're creating, from our teachers, even our rundown buildings, quite frankly. My children are happy. They're supported. They're thriving, and they're growing, and I'm so thankful to South Kingston for that. I grew up in a hometown where the school budget is $155 million. It's a very privileged community. I was given every privilege. I don't want to live there. I want to live here, and that's because of the wonderful community that we have. With respect to the anger and the perceptions of injustice, this is also something that somebody brought up. Maybe it was also Mr. Levitt. I honestly have a lot of anger about what's happening in terms of our state aid. We have two bills that are going to come in front of the House tomorrow, relevant to the state aid, that really is very relevant to us as a community. I know you're all probably very familiar with bills, I think it's H5601 and H5602. They have an opportunity to put the brakes on the decline, the steep declines in state aid that we've really suffered from. The second bill would allow for reimbursement of transportation costs, which we know have not been reimbursable up till now. Despite that transportation's a mandate from the state, these are very, very real ways in which our hands have been tied, along with the 4% property tax transfer cap. So if we want to rally against something that feels unjust, to me, as a community, we should be focusing on Providence and what's happening at the State House. And we have an opportunity to advocate for ourselves tomorrow, whether you can go, whether you can submit written testimony. Mr. O'Neill has data from 2011. I was able to find them through 2013. Per my calculations, the state aid that we've received since then has declined 34%. That's dramatic. That's steep. And that doesn't feel right. So if we want to... In fact, you know, again, think about what gets us angry. We shouldn't be angry at each other. We should be angry at something that we can rally... I'm saying we should all be angry, speaking to what I actually do, which is to help people manage their anger. But I really do think we should be thinking about, where is the injustice coming from? How can we come together as a community to address it? And what can we be hopeful for? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Pam Namius, and I'm one of the people who waited for an ambulance. And what I don't understand is, I'm sorry to compare this, but Massachusetts has Proposition 2 1/2, and that is where the cap on their taxes for property cannot go up more than 2 1/2%. And I don't understand, you're saying 4% cap is really not enough, even though that is the state law. So if Massachusetts can do it with much better school ratings, I don't understand why Rhode Island can't do it under 4% cap. The taxes just keep increasing and compounding. And the other thing I want to say about with the ambulance situation is, in my neighborhood, we had an elderly couple, and the ambulance was there, as far as I know, on time after. I called it at least four to six times. That... I don't know what would have happened if another person needed an ambulance at that time. We are all getting older, and I certainly hope that no one's child and no one here ever has to wait for an ambulance. It's frightening, and I think we need to find a way to pay for it now. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm Walter Young, Wally. I live in Kingston. I think tonight I decided, after listening to the testimony, I would be a representative of the seniors, because I've been hearing through the community and talking to people, we need this EMS service because we have so many seniors in our town. And one of the reasons we have so many seniors is they all want to retire here. And we facilitate that by saying, build all the senior-only, no-kid housing that you developers want to build. So we have 55 and older, no kids everywhere. And how people can live without hearing kids on bicycles and tricycles and scooters, I don't know. But anyhow, I'm fairly new here. I moved here in 1986, 30-some years ago. My kids had the best education they could possibly have. And unlike some, I want that education opportunity to be available for every child for the next 100 years. I'm not one of those, I've got mine, you can't have yours. Education is the most important service that we, as a town, do provide. And if you say, well, I don't care where you get the money from, we need this EMS, well, why would you sign a petition to say, take it away from the schools? We shouldn't be in the take it from Peter to pay Paul. We need this service, let's have it. But some of it is retribution from the election, and we're going to punish people who got elected or whatever. But beyond all that, we need to fund the school budget as you have it. We need to find a way to do the EMS. We need to find a way to do the debt service and not take it from one person or one group or one program or the other. Thank you very much.
I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I'm in a unique situation where I had to call the ambulance this month for my child. And two EMTs came to my house, as did a paramedic, and I'm in Snug Harbor. It was right at rush hour in the morning, getting ready for school. And the EMTs rode with me, I rode shotgun, which was really interesting, in an ambulance, all the way up to Hasbro. And the paramedic came in, and I felt the entire time, as soon as I walked through the door, which was in a very timely manner, well taken care of, well served, I was up in Providence, they spoke for my child and myself, represented me, and stayed by us until my child was stable. I'm also a pro-parent of three, incoming kindergarten as well, children in Mattoonik. And I really think there's a lot of hope here, and we can fund both. And $100,000 or $200,000 when it comes to education and health is something that this town can come up with. And we are creative. We are becoming creative. I believe that the people that we have in our positions in this town have the resources to think outside the box collaboratively. And it's a new time, and working together, putting things behind us, we can move ahead. But I didn't want tonight to go by without knowing that I spoke for the EMT staff. They were phenomenal. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Mike Nomiass, and I'm also a newcomer. I moved here in 97. One of these days, I'll get to be a real resident, but I don't know when. So I live in Mattoonik, and I would just like to point out that we have this conflict. The reason we have this conflict is we have a very inefficient education plant that makes it very difficult to use money wisely. We have, quite frankly, three too many school buildings, and most of us that have looked into this know that. The challenge that I put before you is, if you have an inefficient plant, there is no way to efficiently achieve a high-performing school. So what you need to do is find a way to close two schools and redistribute the remaining children. Now, I heard tonight that Curtis Corner's closure, which I've been hearing about for a couple of years, has once again been postponed for a few more years. Well, folks, there's no more postponing. You don't have money for basic things like debt service, like EMS, and you feel like you're not giving the school enough money to run their inefficient plant. Every half-empty school you close puts a million dollars in the school committee's pocket. Now, you want $2 million more in the schools? Close two of the half-empty schools. It's really simple. Rearrange your staff so they can feel confident they'll actually have a job the next year. That'll build morale, and it will help things. But if you just keep putting it off and putting it off and putting it off, the, what was it, depression, anger, helplessness, and all the rest of it is just going to continue to grow. So my suggestion and my challenge to you folks who have a very difficult job, I don't know how you do it, I couldn't do it, I don't have the patience you have, you've got to find a way to close two school buildings between now and the start of school in September. And you'll have plenty of money and can fund things like debt service, EMS, and the school will have at least $1.5 million more spendable operational funding without increasing the budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't see anyone else able, so I'll take this. Jim O'Neill again. Just a comment on a few things said earlier tonight. Joe Vili, for years, has been trying to help us with vocabulary. There have been no cuts to the school budget. There have been nothing but reductions. Now, Abel brought up tonight the inflation rate. Well, that's one thing, too. But when we average losing 100 kids a year for the last 15 years, that's what we've lost, almost 1,450, 1,500 kids. 100 kids a year, that's $2 million. 50 kids a year is $1 million. So that inflation argument really has no validity. A couple of things you really need to really take heed to. Governor Ramondo, whether you like her or not, Central Falls, we already totally support the state. We, the taxpayers, all of us, support their schools. When Sockett and Wes Warwick are only a little bit behind, followed by Providence, three quarters of their budget, $350 million, we, the taxpayers, $270 million. We do our job, and we've been clobbered by that education funding formula I keep telling you about. And most of our problem was based on the fact that we were not efficient running the facilities. Dr. Mega, chairman of the school committee back in 2012, we have a facilities problem. We are overfacilitated. It's killing, he didn't use the word killing, but he says it's really harming our program development. You cannot deny that. But yet, you don't talk about it. This is beyond me. But Providence, to go back to Providence again, if Providence has taken over, then you add when Sockett, Central Falls, they're going to have 50,000 of the 140,000 kids in the state. We're going to be on the brink. If we don't show that we can be leaner, newer and fewer when all the new buildings come in, if we are facing the prospect of the state sending all of us per pupil dollar amount, a fixed dollar amount, this is very, very close. In the inner cities, they certainly deserve to have safe buildings and the best faculty, but we are very close if we're not careful of answering to the state. And it's too bad Mr. Levitt left. He wanted his anger speech and the rest of it. You know, I don't know anything really, honestly, about Facebook. Probably why I bought the stock, but anyway. But yet, I find myself, a week and a half ago, boom, redacted above me all around. And I sign these petitions because I know we have a growing senior population. I'm in the business. So here I am, looking at redactions and being a target. Mark Levitt needs to see this stuff, and I'm sorry he left, and hopefully he's tuning in now. He needs to see what those pages look like, to see that free speech means nothing anymore. What kind of a world does he come from? Thank you.
I forgot to thank Mr. Zenitsky for going up to Providence a week and a half ago to attempt to change the, I think it was the House Finance Committee. Was that the group that you went to? The 10 people that tried to talk him out from, you did your speech about the Evergreen Contract?
Yes.
Okay. I really appreciate you going up there. I had not, that was a really good thing to do for our town. Obviously, it wasn't successful in changing anybody's mind in the legislature, but they needed to hear what you had to say. Thank you.
I wasn't going to get up either, but I just wanted to clear up a comment that was made a moment ago about closing two schools. The population will not fit if we close two schools. The facility study reviewed who's in there now and came up with a plan where if we take Curtis Corner offline in the future, then we will not need that space, but we do need this current space now. So that kind of comment is really, really creates a misconception within the community, and this discussion of decreased enrollment gets way overinflated in conversation. Another thing I just want to say to reiterate Lauren's point is, and Jim had spoken about the funding formula, is that is something we can all get behind. Tomorrow, and I don't know how many, I haven't seen it, I've seen it on some, in some social media, in some circles, and I'm not seeing it in all circles, but if we're all concerned about the amount of money we're spending on taxes and the amount that's trickling back to our own town, and the amount that's going to Owen Sockett or somewhere else, then we can all rally and go to the state or email and ask for the funding, our own tax dollars to be turned to our students. We are, we are big losers in the state funding formula. Ourselves, Charahoe, are two of the largest districts in the state, and we are mandated for transportation, and that is not part of the funding formula right now. One of the bills is going to bring that into the funding formula, the other will stop the people who are losing in the funding formula from losing more. So I would think that all of our, no matter our differences, we could all agree that we'd like to see more of our funding come back to our students. So I hope that people look into it and write or show up tomorrow.
Ms., can I just ask you to state your name?
Jess Jeremiah.
All right, any comments up here at the table?
Yeah, so a couple of, just a couple of observations from the comments that have been made. So I haven't witnessed, and I've spoken to a lot of people, I'm pretty accessible in my place of business, so I've spoken to a lot of people about the budget in general since December. And I haven't witnessed the depression and anger. I haven't seen people who are angry at other people, I haven't seen people who are, you know, downright depressed about this. And believe me, I've spoken to a lot of people. So maybe I missed it, but I think that we're a community that will go through this process, I've seen it happen for many years, will go through this process, and then we're a community member still. We're not, I don't see that it's an us against them. Somebody made a point about, why would you be taking it from one line item to pay another? And my reason for going to that default immediately for any spending is to respect the taxpayer rather than increase the total spending. It's to find, I mean, it's how I run my business, right? It's to find, you have a limited amount of funds, we know that we're capped at 4%, and so you try to find the best product at the end of the day with those $98 million. One of the earlier budget sessions, I think it might have been the last one or the one before, we were, and the school committee was advised by their financial person as well, not to go to debt service or reserves for operational costs. Operational costs repeat unless you remove the program in the following year, you need that money again. If you take it from either debt service or reserves, you have a new line item next year, and if you haven't budgeted for it, you've got to do the same thing over. It's how you deplete, you know, we have a, we have a healthy picture here, and we're trying to keep that. So those are just my sort of reflections on what a lot of people had to say here. When we get to the final budget, I'll have some more comments.
Mr. President, if I may?
Sure.
I don't want to be dramatic about this, but we've been listening to the discussion, and Trish and I have been sort of trying to figure out what assumptions we have to make to get us to a full four-person team for EMS in January. And I think we've actually got a strategy that requires us to make some reasonable assumptions, but they are in fact reasonable assumptions. If the council can assume that we will in fact realize $50,000 in overtime savings by bringing on a second crew, the shifts that we are operating now are not highly desirable. The schedules are just not great. By getting to two 24-hour services, we improve the schedules, and the director of EMS has said that he thinks we're going to realize significant overtime savings just by going to a different schedule. If we assume $50,000 for the six-month period, which we think is reasonable, we wouldn't, we wouldn't make this recommendation if we thought it was unreasonable. And if we assume that revenue from third-party payers is going to increase by $50,000, again, looking at our history, which we've just done again, it's not an unreasonable assumption. It is an assumption we'd be asking the council to make. But if we do that, and we add $25,000 from council contingency, and we sort of cobble together some nickels and dimes, we can take some OPEB revenue reduction, we've got some reserves to the amount of $75,000 in the preliminary budget if we take 15 from that, and if we recognize that we've got a financial director who will be out of office for a period of time, we could capture some revenue there, we think we can get to funding with those assumptions that would get us to a four-person crew in January. Again, so the trick is assuming that we're right, and if we're not, we will have to adjust. But I think we can ask Craig to manage his OT and make sure he hits the number. He's told us he can do it. If we tell him, look, you're on the hook now, you promised it, you got to deliver, and if we're making sure that our billing is right, those assumptions, I think, are reasonable.
Amy Reiner, Director of Administrative Services. Just a couple more points to offer for consideration. One thing specific to the OT, $50,000 estimate that would be able to be reduced, that is, that number, my understanding, was based on the assumption that the two employees we were to hire and put in place as of January 1 would not be to fill new shifts, but would be to backfill existing shifts that we would otherwise be filling through overtime. So instead of paying time and a half, So instead of paying time and a half, we're paying regular time. The other aspect of this, and I'm not saying that it will be an issue, but it will be something that has to be addressed, is the current collective bargaining agreement with IAFF Local 3365 indicates they have an annual bid shift that is going to take place this spring for July 1. So we would need to work with the local union to implement any changes mid-year that they would agree to. I would hope that that would be something that they would see of value, because it would move all employees to a 24-hour rotation, as opposed to, right now, we have half the folks on 24, and the other folks working 12s. And we would need to work in collaboration with the local.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So just as a quick overview, so we're actually talking about hiring the four in January. So four in January would essentially increase the bottom line of the general fund by $50,000. So right now, the general fund is $26,000,0434. We would increase that to $26,050,434. And the way we would find that would be, you'd have to increase the EMS, the public safety function by $100,000. That's $150,000 in full-time employees minus $50,000 in overtime. Our recommendation would be to reduce the council contingency by 25,000, reduce finance by 10,000, and that would be from my resignation and filling me, and then reduce the OPEB contingency by 15,000. The gap in that is $50,000, and I'd make the recommendation to increase the EMS billing services revenue by $50,000, which will result in no change in your property tax appropriation. So it's just an increase in your expenditures.
Now, to Director Reiner's points, she's exactly right. I mean, part of the reason that we've had a phased approach to this problem is that there are many steps to getting there. If anywhere along the way we run into a bump in the road, we will simply stretch the schedule.
Right, we just got to set the conditions that make it possible.
That's correct.
So I was up there taking notes and coming up with something similar to you guys, but definitely different, and I'm just going to throw it out there because it's about being open and communicating. One of the ideas that I had was taking initially, looking at the fact that we haven't used any of the 65 for this year, and next year we haven't used it in the budget, was taking $82,500 from that council fund to fund half of the debt service, which was the 165, so it's 82.5, and then giving the manager permission to dip into the rainy fund if need be in terms of making whole the four-man crew, four-person crew, sorry, in, by January 1. And then there would still be another 20-something to $30,000 that we could do something with and still have a little bit of money left in the council reserve.
I would just counter that in saying, year-end transfers are coming up in June, I make that recommendation to you. So if the thought is that you'd like to take your fund contingency of $65,000 in the 2019 budget and appropriate that to the debt service fund, that's appropriate. What's not appropriate is to fund operating and personnel costs out of your fund balance. That's not appropriate. So I would not recommend that at all, but I, I would support taking your council contingency and earmarking that for the debt service.
And the other point I just wanted to make was that, there was a valid point made that I think, from the council's perspective, is that if we had known, and again, it's nobody's fault, I'm just saying, if we had known initially that we were going to have to dip into the $165,000 of the debt service, I think some of us potentially may have voted a different way at that point, and that's just a point I'm making. The other thing is that, listening to everyone, I think it is really important that folks get out there and push for the transportation bill and to stop the last year of the funding formula decline. And some of the other concerns I have is, I wonder what the new education commissioner, what her plans might be in terms of where her goals are going to be, are they going to be in the cities, are they going to be in the suburbs, and are things going to change potentially? So that definitely concerns me. But there was another valid point made that I think Jim made about RIDE back, I think when Deborah Gist was here, and I think got into an argument with our town manager at the time, or maybe Steve got a little heated back then, regarding the funding formula. And at that point, from my understanding and everything I've read and heard, is that they were not happy with the fact that we weren't being efficient, which then led to a certain number of years, all of these years of the economic negative impact on our funding formula, while you have other schools like Westerly, and when you look at Westerly, I mean, they're, they're maxed out at their, their debt per capita is huge in that town. But they're getting funding, Narragansett's getting the positive impact there while we're getting the negative impact. So I think we need to really make sure that the negative funding formula stops for South Kingstown, it doesn't continue, and hopefully that they look at the fact that, you know, transportation is mandated and we have 64 square miles to cover, and it's not fear for our town versus, say, Providence, where you can issue bus passes to people who might need it, as an example. Thank you.
All right, well, I think, you know, we're ready to close the public hearing. I would say, from my perspective, I really like that we've been able to come up with a plan sort of on the fly here. I think it's great that we can get to that four with the 25,000. You know, looking at our 65,000 overall in our contingency fund, the tri-county, they're asking for 24,000, is that?
That's correct.
So that would, I would propose that we use 24,000 out of our contingency for that. That would leave another 16,000 in that contingency fund, which I personally would like to earmark for the schools and the Smile program. We have no control over how the schools spend money, but I think that that's the same amount of money that that program costs, and it's something that we could make available out of our contingency.
Would there be any way to fund Smiles indirectly, or?
Yeah, I think that that's something that the council could fund directly. I don't see any.
I don't think it needs to be part of that bigger number. I think if the council wants to fund Smiles, we can fund Smiles.
Well, then I'd go for that. So just for clarification, procedurally now, are we going to handle the two questions separately from the?
You should vote on each of the petitions as presented separately, and then any member of the council can propose any additional or alternate adjustments to the budget.
And then we do a final vote on the whole budget?
Correct.
Great, thank you.
Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. I'll second that.
So moved, any discussion about that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The public hearing is closed, so I think first order would be to take up the two petitions. We'll just take them in order. First one is the 165,000 returned to the debt service. Do I hear a motion on that?
You don't actually need a motion, but it's, it's solid, you do have to discuss it.
You can, you can take the, I think, discussion that you've been having all night as the discussion for this petition, and you can just simply do an up or down vote on it.
Okay. All right, all in favor, or discussion, anybody want to discuss this petition item still?
In regards to the two petitions, I think we live in a community where I'm glad that everyone can have their voice. People have made valid points on both sides tonight, and this is a difficult decision for the council at the same time. Of course, I don't think any of us want to see a true referendum in our town, but at the same time, like I said, it's important that everyone gets to voice their concerns. We're all taxpayers, we all live in the town, we all have different needs. Some of us, you know, are at different points in our lives, and some of us have kids in the schools, some of us have put kids through the schools, and, and again, it's not about the schools, but it is a big part of our budget, and the only reason I bring up the schools in this case is because of the fact that it was asking to take money from the school department or the school fund. So in this case, like I said, it's important that everyone gets to be heard, and we live in a democracy, and like I said, it's, I'm happy that, in a way, that even though we might not agree on what is in the petitions potentially, that people have the opportunity to do so.
On the first petition, I still feel very strongly that the advice that we've gotten from, from staff is that you don't use money from debt service to fund operations, and I do think that this town funds education very well, so those are my reasons.
Any further comments on the first petition? All right, all in favor of taking 165,000 from the school fund and returning it to the debt service fund, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
And that petition fails. The second petition is the one for 200,000 from the school fund to the EMS fund. Discussion on this item.
My only comments here, I think it's very important to fund the EMS. We've heard dozens of emails from local people who say that this is a need, that they think they want filled. Happy that the staff has come up with a way to fund it, probably quicker than we had initially intended, but we found a way to fund it that seems to satisfy it without taking it from the schools, and happy about that.
And I'll, I'll agree with you, Joe, on that, and doing the half-year is a great idea, and the fact that we wouldn't be ready, even in July, to go forward with it. We're going to need time to outfit the building, figure out whether or not the whole building needs to be sprinkled or not, or just the living quarters, and then the hiring process. And from my understanding currently, we have two vacancies in EMS currently, so.
Correct.
I think that's something that I can definitely support, and it's important. I mean, you don't want to be the person waiting for an ambulance and knowing that something could have been done.
Other comments? All in favor of the 200,000 transfer from the school fund to EMS, say aye. All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
That petition also fails, and so at this point, we'll entertain amendments to the budget as we have adopted it preliminarily.
I'd like to talk about the tri-county organization, and maybe we should discuss using some of the council fund to, to fund them. I would look to them to look for the tax relief next time instead of, instead of, we can't keep raiding the same fund, but because of their lateness, I'd be, I'd be amenable to that.
Any other thoughts on the tri-county?
I'd like to hear your recommendation as to utilizing all the funds in the town council contingency account.
In what sense?
We're talking 25,000 would come out for EMS to take effect January 2020. The possibility of utilizing the rest, or a fraction thereof, towards schools to save the Smile program, and then an amount to be used toward, what's that?
Tri-county.
Tri-county.
This is the, the council's fund. It is appropriate for the council to use these funds for any appropriate purpose that the council identifies. The money that you're talking about tonight is actually funding from this, the current fiscal year, correct? We're talking 19, right?
Yes, this is current funds.
Not.
This is not the contingency, council contingency fund for 2019, 2020, we're talking about 2018, 2019 fund that we haven't used any of.
So you're talking about earmarking it in 2019 to fund 2020, tri-county? Is that what you're asking?
Yes, funds in the current balance, using that for the application that they put in for next year.
Okay.
So it's actually not a, a budget decision, then? You're looking at $65,000 for next year's being unchanged, and you're simply deciding to expend? You don't need to do that, actually, tonight. We can, we can expend money from the current year's budget as you deem appropriate. You simply wouldn't have to make an adjustment to next year's budget.
Would it be more efficient to write it into the budget?
Well, again, if you're concerned about taking your budget down to zero for 2020, you could always have, Joe, is that, you could always have the applicant come to you, request the funding for 2020, and you can expense it from your fund contingency. That way, for next year's budget preparation, you're not starting with a zero, if that's your concern, Rory. I don't know if that was your concern.
My concern is utilizing all the funds available in that account and not replenishing it.
And historically, that's always been up to the discretion of the council, because that's your contingency to do what you want. We just continue to fund it as we had in the past. We don't really make a recommendation as to how you would spend your department.
Trish, how, how have we used that fund in the past?
It's just one-time, one-time requests that come before you. We've transferred it for OPEB liabilities at year-end because you hadn't used it, but the policy is really $100,000. That's the, that's the council policy. We've just never been able to sustain $100,000, so that's why it's at 65.
So, Trish, for clarification, we're talking about spending the 60 or 65,000 from the 18, 19, or is that already spent?
We haven't spent it at all.
You haven't spent anything for 18, 19, so when I was explaining EMS, I was talking specifically about the 2020 budget.
Got it, okay.
But if you're, if you're looking to take 25,000 from 2019, we can earmark it at the end of the year for June for 2020 slated for tri-county, if that's what you're looking to do.
I'm always amazed how we get hung up on.
Mm-hmm.
So if we haven't touched the 65,000 for 18, 19, what happens to that money?
It drops to the fund balance, or I'd put a recommendation in front of you in June to move it either to, as I explained, termination reserve fund or OPEB liability.
So to speak to Councilman McEntee's concern, we're not going to be zeroing that account out in the next fiscal year. 19, 20 will not start with a zero balance if you choose to spend the money from 18, 19. And technically, the 18, 19 expenditures don't need to be, those decisions don't need to be made tonight. You can, you can make those.
So from the six, from the 65 that we haven't spent this year, we could take 25,000 for EMS, 24,000 for tri-town, and that leaves 16,000 for Smiles?
For this year, and then you start next year on January, on July 1, you're at 65 again.
So it's good that we didn't spend our money.
No, no, we need to. No, we need to go back.
Okay, sorry.
When I explained EMS, I explained that because we were talking about the 2020 budget, specifically. That had nothing to do with 2019, because you cannot reserve funds for personnel or operating costs that are recurring. So when I was talking about that, I was specific to the 2020 budget, which would then take your $65,000 down to 40,000. So that was that. If you want to discuss separately, the Smile program in tri-county related to 2019 has nothing to do with this 2020 budget, which we're talking about right now, but if that's a direction you would like me to consider for putting in front of you in June transfers, then that's what I'll do. But I, but I think we should just stick to the 2020 budget before we start commingling.
So, the amendment to the 2020 budget would be to take the council contingency to 65 down to 40 for that specific purpose with EMS? We don't even necessarily have to deal with tri-county now, then, if we, if we intend to make that transfer in June, and similarly for Smile?
Yes.
Okay.
The only concern I have with that is that we're not putting any funds towards the missing 165,000. I'd feel a lot more comfortable if we were allocating at least some funds towards that.
So, the net of that for 2019 would be $25,000 that you could earmark for debt service, and then in 2020, whatever happens in 2020, you potentially have $40,000 that you could then earmark in June of 2020 for the debt service as well. Again, you'll have other surplus dollars that, it's not going to be me next year, next June's in here.
Not coming back?
The finance director at that time could appropriate additional general fund surplus dollars for your debt service at that time.
Thank you. So, do I hear a motion for the $25,000 adjustment to the council contingency to the EMS fund?
I'll make a motion that we move 25,000 from the council contingency fund to the EMS fund for next year's budget.
Second.
So moved, any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries. Would anybody else like to offer an amendment to the budget? All right, do I hear a motion on the budget?
So, before you entertain the motion, the only thing I'd like to say is we need to separate out the outside agency payment to the Southern Rhode Island Chamber of Commerce, or I'll, I'll ask Amy for direction. So, if my wife works for the Southern Rhode Island Chamber, I will probably not vote in favor of this budget. Do I still need to separate out?
You should either, if, if that agency is part of the budget, you should recuse from the whole vote, unless it's voted on separately.
So let's separate, I forget the number, 9,000?
Yeah, so a motion to consider the line item for the Chamber of Commerce for, was it 9,000, or it was more?
They had two line items that they were asking for, I think, yeah, right, for one.
I believe that's a $9,000 transfer. Yes.
All right, so, yeah, let's have that motion.
It's $9,000, that's correct.
So you're gonna take that first?
Yes.
So I need that motion.
So I'll make a motion that we transfer $9,000, or we appropriate $9,000 in the 2020 budget for the Southern Rhode Island Chamber of Commerce.
I'll second that.
So moved.
I will recuse.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that motion carries. And now, do we have a motion on the rest of the budget?
So there's going to have to be an adjustment to the bottom line.
9,000, right?
Have, have you got that number?
Right.
$50,000 is the addition. Bottom line is going to be increased by $50,000. The general fund, total general fund, currently in the preliminary at 26 million, 10,434,000 will be 26 million, 60,000, 50?
50,000.
I think 60,434.
Right, so we go to 60, 26, right.
So, the new amount will be 26 million, 60,434.
Do I hear that motion?
I will make that motion.
This is, this is for the general fund first?
Just the general fund?
That's correct. And this will enable the EMS strategy that, that's been outlined here.
So we're gonna vote on the school budget separately?
So, it's, we need an amendment to get this number.
Yeah, so we need a motion to amend the general fund budget up by 50,000.
And, and now these numbers are reduced by 9,000, since you considered that as a separate vote?
Okay. So, that number is...
26, 51,000.
Right.
Yep. So first, we need a motion to amend it by the, by the $50,000, right, to fund EMS. So I guess that's my motion, to amend this budget by 50,000 to fund EMS for 2020.
Second. So moved, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Actually, I think that will be sufficient by itself. We'll be able to, to deal with the increase now that we have an, that specific amount, we're fine.
Are we still addressing the 9,000?
9,000 has been addressed.
Okay.
All right, now, a motion on the whole budget.
Yeah, after the second.
So that puts us at 98 million, 182,000. Am I right? 98 million, 182,916, we raise it by 50?
We need to ask...
Right. We already...
I'm gonna make my wife quit.
So, I, I do have a concern of that we already appropriated the 9, right? Because Joe can't vote on that, right? So we want to, we want to take the 9,000 out, so Joe can vote on the budget.
Already did.
Which has already been done.
Right, but the numbers reflect the 9,000. So the budget with the increase in, in the 50,000 going to EMS is 98 million, 182,000, correct now? 916,000. So we would approve that, but we would accept the 9,000 for the Southern Rhode Island Chamber of Commerce that has already been approved, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so there's my motion.
I'll second that motion.
Second, all right, now we'll have discussion.
I've got a couple of comments. So, I have some real concerns going forward. We know that we have some upcoming bonded debt. We don't know what that number is gonna be yet. We, we're not even really sure what kind of money we're gonna spend improving the schools. I have a concern also about, I believe the Rhode Island Department of Education has mandated that at some point, and I don't know the timeframe, but it's a certain number of years, we're gonna gradually have to have a line item in the budget that is dedicated to 3% of the total budget, and it's for school facilities maintenance. That's a new expense that we don't have now, and 3% of that school budget is not a small number. And then the operational budget in, in, on the school side concerns me as well, because we know we have declining enrollment, we know that the total spending goes up every year. We hear about adjustments to the proposed spending, but we frankly have increased the budget every year. I mean, if you want to call them cuts, we're about to cut ourselves to the biggest budget we've ever had. So, I have concerns about the debt service, I'm sorry, the bonded debt that we have an unknown number. It's probably gonna be a very large number, the 3% set aside for building maintenance, facilities maintenance, and the operational budget on the school side. So, those, those are my comments. I, I think it's very concerning and difficult to have sort of these unknowns going forward, and we have to keep in mind to respect the taxpayer. Thank you.
Certainly, increasing the tax levy by 3.97% is not ideal. You know, it's, it's not our first choice, it's not your first choice, none of us like doing that. We've ultimately identified the areas that we think need increases, with the combination of the schools and those on the municipal side as well. Now, in addition to providing excellence in education, a priority for me is allowing an environment where young people can live and raise a family and thrive in an economy that works for them. Now, unfortunately, with housing prices high in SK and continual increases in tax rates, it's going to be hard to get there. But, you know, the council, it is a priority for all of us to look at ways to allow for more affordable housing, to look at ways to allow for more incentives towards commercial business, to invest in land and buildings in this town, and we're gonna continue to do so. Now, I know that the increase in this budget is significant, but, you know, going forward, it's, it's gonna be a priority for all five of us, I believe, to have constraints around that and make sure we, we don't allow for a compounding effect. Because certainly, as a young professional living in SK, an effect of a 4% increase year after year will drive many out of this town. And it's, it's, it's not gonna be good for the young people, it's not gonna be good for this town as a whole. So, it is unfortunate, but again, I do believe that we have, as a council, identified the areas that, that do need increases, and I will be voting in favor of this budget.
Further discussion?
The only other further discussion, you know, to Rory's point and to Joe's point, is that excellence in education, in my opinion, doesn't always directly correlate to how much money you're spending. So I just want to throw that out there, just to keep that in mind, because Joe is right. As part of this whole new building situation with the new facilities, there is going to be a 3% add-on, which, in my opinion, is a good idea, because one of the reasons we're in this situation with the facilities is that when you run budgets in a certain way, and you're looking to save money, you might take it away from maintenance of your facilities. So this is gonna force not just schools in South Kingston, but throughout the state, to maintain their facilities in a better state, which I think is important for the health and the environment that our kids will learn in, and also the teachers' environment, which they're gonna teach in. So, I guess what I do caution is that we seem to be here year after year after year. And one of the things that came out in one of the meetings, and I don't remember if it was in our council meeting that it came up in, or if it was in a building committee meeting, but the school committee did mention that they were looking to now hire a efficiency person. So I hope that does work out, in that they do find actual operational savings, so that money can be spent elsewhere, including debt service, in terms of being able to fund the future expansion and correcting our facilities that are, in my opinion, not in good shape, especially our high school.
So, we're all taxpayers. We all feel and live and breathe the same ups and downs, and everybody's opinions are warranted and valid, and I'm happy to hear all of them. I just think it's really important that everyone understands that the decisions we make up here and the, and the point of view that we have reflect the community at large. And, and it's important for everyone's opinion up here to be heard, as well as the communities. I am, am confident in my decisions that I've made up to this point, that I've made the best decisions I can for the current circumstances. And I think everybody here probably feels the same way. So I just thank you all for your attention and your participation.
Thanks, Deb. For my part, I, I think I heard a few things tonight that I wholeheartedly agree with. One of them is, if we feel anger, it really is appropriately placed at the State House. When you look at the facts of, of the way we're constrained in our spending, we've really been put behind the eight ball by RIDE, by the phase out of the car tax. We're nearly maxing out our property tax transfer, and we're not even able to increase the town spending at the rate of inflation. That's effectively means we're decreasing spending as a state mandate. I think when you dig into the way the funding formula works, to have transportation not be included in it has caused a really negative feedback loop. You know, as we spend more per pupil, a large part of that is spending on transportation is not taken into account. We have to continue to increase our spending as the state's funding dwindles, and they continue to see us spending more and more per pupil, even though a larger and larger percentage of that is for transportation, which they don't include. So, there's, there's reason to be angry about the situation we're put in, in that regard. I do hope those bills that people talked about today find support in the State House. That remains to be seen. I think, I appreciate all the work the town staff has done, being inventive with, with some of the fixes tonight. I'm really happy to see that we might be able to get to that full staffing for EMS in January. Happy that we've found ways to maybe preserve the Smile program and, and tri-county. So I think those are all great accomplishments. I do hope that the cuts to the schools, call them what you will, aren't so significant that they impact our quality of education drastically. I think, I also heard people speak tonight about hope, and I thought that those are, those are also well-placed emotions and feelings at this point. I think we do have a lot of dedication here at the table to, to making life more affordable in SK, starting with housing policies that we'll be working on in the coming year. And not all that can be touched in the budget, but I think we're dedicated to that, and I look forward to seeing what we can, what we can come up with together. So I want to thank you all for bearing with us through this, and all the input that we've gotten from members from the community.
I just want to add one thing, Abel. This is important, in my opinion. You know, there's a process that we all go through with this budget. I heard years ago, there used to be a financial town budget meeting, which could, could get out of control a little bit. But it's a process, right? And I think that, the one thing I do want to say is that, whatever the process is, everyone should be afforded the right to exercise that process. And what I am disappointed in was the public shaming of folks who signed a petition. And then having a petition circulating with certain names crossed out and certain names left in, I think was not a good thing for our town. And I really do hope it doesn't happen again.
All right, any further comments? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the budget, as moved, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
No.
And by a count of four to one, the budget passes.
Yes.
So item B under new business is a resolution authorizing fund transfers as shown on exhibit two.
I'll make a motion to approve agenda item 5A as presented.
Second.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. And motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second.
So moved. All in favor say aye.
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 And the time is about 9:53.
We have to reconvene because we have to make an amendment on the transfers because of EMS.
On the transfer because the EMS 50,000 should be added to the 600,000 in the transfer there. It'll save us from doing this later. We could do it at a later time, but while we're here.
I'm going to reopen the meeting.
Vote to reconvene.
Motion to reconvene, do I hear one?
I'll make a motion to reconvene.
Second. So moved. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
So the last motion needed to be amended by 50,000.
The item is five, be it resolved that the program balances in 19, 20 fiscal year expenditures for various utility and special revenue funds identified below shall be transferred to the general funding corresponding not to exceed amounts. Fund code 322 EMS billing services fund amend from $600,000 to $650,000.
Do I hear that motion?
I will make that motion.
Second.
Second. All right. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Now?
Thank you. That saves us from coming back.
Motion to adjourn again. Second.
Moved. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yes, we're out of here.